Do you have someone who wants to buy it? You have someone who wants to buy it? Oh, the woman who owns it. Oh. Yeah. Right. Okay. All right.
Good evening. Welcome to the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals meeting for February 11th, 2019. Matter of record, if you wish to speak tonight on behalf of the petition or in opposition of petition, please enter your name, sign in. State your name and address for the public record. If you have a cellphone off, please place it on vibrate to turn it off. Moving forward under continued business, ZB 2019-1 for a variance by Spiros Skanaskos at 55 Robert Street. Section 5.1, we received a communication for a continuance to March 11th, 2019 from the petitioner. They have a motion for continuance.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. We're seeking another continuance on this. Following that initial meeting, the weather turned a little colder than expected, so we had a difficult time getting the soil samples to do the testing for the subsurface infiltration systems. And I took it upon myself to notify some of the individuals who were here last time, the Potteckville citizens, as well as one of the other abutters. And we're also meeting with Attorney Joseph Clermont, who owns a house on Mount Hope Street on Wednesday, to go over that with him, to make sure we have everything in order with the abutters and the engineering department. So we're asking for this further continuance to March 11th.
Well, thank you, Counsel. I always, as always, well-prepared, and we appreciate your proactive response to your follow-up continuance.
Thank you.
That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion on ZB 2019-1 for a variance on 55 Robert Street to continue public hearing to March 11th, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman, perin.
Approve.
Member Peck.
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Jamina.
Approval.
Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate that. Moving on under new business, ZB 2019-2 for a variance, Emily and Matt Steinberg at 107 Endicott Street. Section 5.1, the applicant proposes to construct a one-story addition onto their existing single-family home at 107 Endicott Street. The home is in traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and the addition requires variance approval under section 5.1 for maximum floor area ratio and for any other relief required under the Lowell ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening, sir. Good evening. Tell us a little bit about your plan? I'm sorry? You could just tell us a little bit about your plan? Yeah, sure. Thank you. Matt Steinberg, homeowner, 107 Endicott Street in Lowell. We did put in the variance because we're looking to expand our home. We have been in the city now for 16 years. I've grown up here. We have two large boys. We have a large dog, and we're... We explored making changes to our basement to accommodate some space for our family, and that was unfeasible due to a load-bearing stairwell within the house. So we looked to expand outward through adding this room on the back of our house, demolishing our deck, and putting this room onto a deck in the back. Great. Appreciate that. We have your latest plan. Did you receive a package from the city, DPD, on comments? Do you have a chance to review them? We did, yes. Did you have a chance to review those? Yes. From what I gather from the Department of... Division of Developmental Services, they have no concerns with the proposed addition. All right, I'll just make sure you had them on record. Yep, we have it. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Mark?
I believe that the proposed project fits neatly within the character of the neighborhood, and I, for one, hope that you are enjoying your new living space very soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three, I just have a couple of questions, but Patrick, this is a situation that we come across quite a bit where we have addition being proposed or a change on a property that doesn't meet zoning, that when you look at the surrounding properties... I think we're going to have a number of these tonight, actually. You kind of wonder how zoning can have such a dense neighborhood, but then when we look at modifying an existing property, we have variances that we're looking for. And so I'm a little bit troubled by how we're meeting the definition of variance here by the requirements that we're being asked to accept. And I don't see in the petition how exactly you're expecting to... So, for instance, one of the requirements for the variance is that the site has... The site has difficulty in meeting requirements of zoning, but your site is relatively square. Your lot, the topography is not really having any... So, I'm not sure if you can solve this, but I do know that this makes sense. But the definition of a variance, it doesn't conform exactly or very neatly to the definition of variance for the board to support. And I don't know if that's something that zoning should be... Or the planning board should be... The planning department should be looking at for zoning relief, but I have a hard time saying no to this kind of proposal. Yet, I don't see how it really is a clear stand for the board to accept with the definition of variance as tightly defined as it is.
I mean, I don't know how much I can add to that. I do think that there are portions of the zoning ordinance that perhaps could be updated. You know, I do think Jared reflects in his comment memo other properties on the street that are similar in the situation.
But that doesn't support the variance definition as far as meeting the requirement for variance to be granted.
Right, so there is a hardship threshold in the variance criteria. I do think that's for the board to kind of weigh, I suppose.
Okay. Okay. I just don't want the board to be... Or for myself to be supporting a motion that puts the city in jeopardy from a legal standpoint. And so that's where I guess I'm going with this. Anyway, I do think what you're asking for makes a ton of sense, and I want to support it. And I agree with you that the neighboring properties have a similar situation already, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Three, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, I agree with Dennis that this makes sense as far as the request of relief on this... Mr. Steinberg, did you do the elevation plan yourself, or did...
The plan? No, that was our contractor.
Oh, it was? Okay. No, they just don't seem professionally done, but I mean, they seem to be very nicely put together, like just kind of on the paper.
He's here, so you heard that comment.
I was going to give you some props and put it together, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, but again, this does make sense in this instance, and I wish you and your family the best of luck, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Van?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van Philip.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any comment. Good luck. I think it's very important to improve your house, so let's go.
Thank you. Thank you. You heard the comments of the board and the comments from the DPD. There are no stand-back. We will address the concerns at the end of the meeting. It's not relative directly to your petition, but from the board's standpoint, I'll discuss it at the opening remarks. So, any other comments by the board? Concerns? That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-2 for a variance under section 5.1 on 107 Endicott Street. May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman, perin.
Approve.
Member Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Jamina.
Approved.
Mr. Steinberg, you've been approved. Good luck over there, and hope your boys stop growing. They won't, thanks. Have a good night. Moving forward under new business, ZB 2019-3 for a variance, Michael McGuire at 152 Jewett Street, section 5.1. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family home at 152 Jewett Street. The proposed home is in traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling, minimum frontage, and maximum floor ratio, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Listen a little bit about your project.
Good evening. Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of Michael McGuire, who's here with me this evening. Our proposal is to tear down the current existing garage at 152 Jewett Street and construct a single-family home on the lot. We are here requesting variances pertaining to the construction. As you can see with the application I submitted, you can see where there will be parking sufficient for two vehicles, as well as a floor plan for the existing home to be constructed on the lot.
Thank you, Counsel. You knew in receipt of the copy of the comments from the city?
I have.
Okay. That being said, anything else at this time?
No, I reviewed the comments. Everything seems to be positive. The only question that came up was regarding the asphalt on the lot in the front. He proposes to construct the home facing Richardson.
Okay.
That asphalt will be pulled up, and there will be grass there. The driveway will be to the right.
Okay, thank you. This time, I'd like to open up the public. Anyone's wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ann Marie Page. I reside at 26 Fremont Street in Lowell, and I sit on the executive board for the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group. I'm sorry, but the microphones need a little help. I'm just basically loud so you can hear me, but I did not hear everything the young lady said. I got part of it. What is the size of that lot right now?
Counselor?
4,180 square feet. Thank you. Okay. Now, I realize there are many other houses on Jewett Street close to that size, but over in Centerville, we are kissing close, and there's not much more that we can take. And that is a small lot. That's why I believe zoning had changed it so it was 7,000 square feet to build a house in Centerville. This is a small lot, very neat, very clean, well taken care of, but it's a small lot. Now, you put a house on it, and then what if you have cars? It is a small lot. So I think you need to give it a close look. We depend on zoning board to follow the codes, and Centerville was moved up to 7,000 square feet. So if we keep sticking houses in, and Jewett Street, they're close. They're very close. And a lot of houses in Centerville are very close, and I think that's why it was changed so we could spread apart a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Harrington. I live on Christian Street in Lowell, Mass. I, too, am a member of the Board of Directors from the Centerville Neighborhood Organization. I'm sure that when the zoning board put together the package that determined how large property should be for construction of new houses, they took into consideration keeping the neighborhoods as their neighborhoods were. They did allow for minor, small variances, or a means to get those small variances. Going from a 7,000-square-foot zoning requirement to a 4,100 zoning request is a little bit more than what should be allowed in that type of a zone. Along with that, the lot... I can't see being able to put a house on a lot that size and have off-street parking. That area of Jewett Street and surrounding area is a very, very densely populated area where almost every family has multiple cars. They're on the... Half of them are on the street. There are very few driveways in that area. We don't need to add more congestion in that section of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Dennis?
Thank you. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The first one is how you expect the board to accept a 40% reduction in lot size? What exactly the criteria is for us to grant the variance?
Well, when I submitted my application, as well as my narrative, I pointed out to the board the neighborhood and what the neighborhood appears as of now. Most of the properties within the neighborhood are on smaller lots than this lot as proposed. Some of them even have two-family homes on them. So, he owns the lot. To not allow him to develop the lot would be... It's a hardship for him based on the lot. I mean, the lot's a square lot. A house would fit perfectly in the middle with sufficient parking.
I'm trying to follow the word hardship here. The house... The lot is not a buildable lot as it stands today.
Correct. As it stands today, yes.
So why is it a hardship for it to become a buildable lot? Because I'm not sure... If it's not a buildable lot, why is the city granting a variance to make it a buildable lot?
So, Mr. McGuire can do something with the lot. It would also bring tax revenue in. It would also beautify the neighborhood. A new home, new construction would look nice.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next one. So, how did you end up with that size structure? It's giving us roughly, you know, 15, 16-foot side yards around the building, around the structure. Why is it 28 by 38?
The structure was to meet setback requirements.
Okay.
It was built within the footprint of the setback requirements.
Right, okay.
That's how we came with the size of the structure. Michael spoke with the architect, Gavin and Sullivan, and they designed a plan for him.
Right. And then you have two-car parking, off-street parking, which is lovely. The site plan doesn't show walkways or decks, at least not the site plan that I have in front of me. Is there a site plan that should be showing a front walk to the front door or a access to rear glass doors for outdoor patio or deck?
I don't have a site plan showing that, but Michael can probably answer it for you.
Is it your intent to have a walkway to the front door? I imagine that would be...
Yes, yeah, there will be, absolutely.
And would it be your intent...
This isn't a site plan. It's just the elevation plan of the proposed building.
Well, I think for informational purposes, we should see whatever is green space and what is hardscape on the site plan, and we should understand exactly what your intent is for access to the structure. So, I'm expecting that anything that's not shown as building footprint or driveway is available for landscaping and pervious material. So, I would like to make it a condition if this were to go forward that the applicant submit a site plan showing all hardscape, walkways, and patios.
Sure, that can be done.
It's a significant variance, and so I'd also like to see a landscape plan. Has one been developed?
Not as of yet, no.
I love your comment about it beautifying the neighborhood, but I think we're removing some trees, maybe? No?
No.
There's no trees on the lot?
Trees.
There are a couple of trees on the lot. I'm hoping to keep them there. We may have to trim some limbs back, but I'm hoping not to remove the trees.
Okay, so... So, let's, if we were to go forward to have a condition to develop a site plan, a landscape plan, showing shrubs and trees with the intent of keeping as many mature trees as possible, I think.
That's acceptable.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm still struggling with the whole definition of a variance for this lot, since it's not defined as a buildable lot today, and you're asking for it to become one. But I like the project, so I don't know what to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, for one, agree with Dennis. I'd like to see at least a site plan showing what the landscape plan is, as well as the hardscape would be. And Patrick, I'm just kind of curious, because this is a corner lot, is there any... There's no other issues with regards to other, you know, dimensional requirements? Because normally, we have a corner lot. It's... You've got to take in both sides of the...
Yeah, so corner lots have two fronts and two sides, and this plan does meet that, those dimensional standards.
Okay. And the parking is stacked parking? Is that what... That's what is being planned, as far as the driveway is concerned?
Yes.
Okay. That's... Yeah, my concern is kind of similar to Dennis, as far as I'd like to see how the layout's going to be as far as the walkways. Any other hardscape, any stone patios and landscaping would be, but that's the only concern I have at this point right now, so, thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Three, Mr. Chairman. To you, Mr. McGuire or Ms. Flood, do you get a chance to talk to the neighborhood at all about just the development or the single-family home that you're planning to build on Jewett Street?
I didn't have any contact from anyone after the notifications went out. Michael owns some property on Jewett Street. I don't know if he's had any contact.
I haven't spoken to any of the neighbors about it.
Okay. I mean, it is concerning to me when the neighbors, you know, have some reservations. I think it's always good when we can, you know, add on or beautify a neighborhood, but in this case, you are also lacking some material, the site plan, landscape plan. I think, in my opinion, I'd like to see this maybe continue until we could have those documents develop, and maybe during that process, if you, Ms. McGuire or Ms. Flood, can meet with the neighborhood group to alleviate some of their concerns they have. But those are just my comments. You know, you do as you wish. It's your project. Those are the comments I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Van Philip.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have a few questions for you. Sorry for that. What is the need for building the house? Is it for you to move in, or...
It's not, no. I would be selling it.
You just want to be there and sell it?
Yes.
But she's saying she's trying to beautify the place. I thought she wants to move in. So, how do you arrange about trash issue? How are you going to do it? I mean, do you have a... If you're going to erect a new building, you have to have trash for it and all the rest? What do you intend to do?
Trash removal during construction.
I mean, are you going to buy... You're just going to get containers, put it by the side, or something like that?
Yeah, there'd be a roll-off dumpster there for any debris.
Yeah. I'm just thinking you're asking too much from us. Basically, you're asking us to give you a variance of 2,820 square feet, but for us to have a sound decision, probably we should see the plan, and how you're going to do it. I think that's my comment. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Philip. So, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, is it permissible for me to question those who rose in opposition to this petition?
Certainly.
Could I speak with Ann Marie Page, please?
Paige, if you would. Member Brier has a question he'd like to answer.
I didn't hear what you said, sir. I'm old, and I'm going deaf, I think.
Member Brier has a question he'd like to direct you away.
Yes, Mr. Brier.
With respect to your position with the Centerville Neighborhood Organization, what do you believe is the most detrimental?
To our neighborhood?
Part of this project, yes.
We've got houses kissing close.
We always have.
I know.
I grew up and...
But we can't have any more kissing close.
I'm just questioning...
Now we have automobiles. Years ago, we didn't.
No, in the interest of fairness. I grew up in Lowell, Centerville.
I know you did.
Put your hand out the window and shake hands with the guy next door.
Now we know how old you are.
We've always had parking problems. We've always had these issues. Why would the neighborhood organization be against a new structure in that neighborhood that will bring in more tax revenue, that's consistent with the neighborhood as it's presently constructed?
Because it's...
Why would you be opposed to that?
It's too close now, and my question would be back to you. Why did zoning change it from 4,000 up to 7,000? In Valverde, it would be 10,000. But in Centerville, it's 7,000. So if you decided, using all your professional advice from builders and others, 7,000 is where we play the game. We can't keep knocking it back down to four. It is too bad, because the garage is beautiful, well-built, neat and clean. The property is neat and clean. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's just too tiny. I would hope that one of the abutters would want to buy it, and then they would have a nice big yard or more room to put their cars. We're too tight over in Centerville. It's too close, and we can't take much more.
The building, around the structure. Why is it 28 by 38?
The structure was to meet setback requirements.
Okay.
It was built within the footprint of the setback requirements.
Right, okay.
That's how we came with the size of the structure. Michael spoke with the architect, Gavin and Sullivan, and they designed a plan for him.
Right. And then you have two-car parking, off-street parking, which is lovely. The site plan doesn't show walkways or decks, at least not the site plan that I have in front of me. Is there a site plan that should be showing a front walk to the front door or a access to rear glass doors for outdoor patio or deck?
I don't have a site plan showing that, but Michael can probably answer it for you.
Is your intent to have a walkway to the front door? I imagine that would be...
Yes, yeah, there will be, absolutely.
And would it be your intent...
This isn't a site plan, it's just the elevation plan of the proposed building.
Well, I think for informational purposes, we should see whatever is green space and what is hardscape on the site plan, and we should understand exactly what your intent is for access to the structure. So I'm expecting that anything that's not shown as building footprint or driveway is available for landscaping and pervious material. So I would like to make it a condition if this were to go forward, that the applicant submit a site plan showing all hardscape, walkways, and patios.
Sure, that can be done.
It's a significant variance, and so I'd also like to see a landscape plan. Has one been developed?
Not as of yet, no.
I love your comment about it beautifying the neighborhood, but I think we're removing some trees, maybe? No?
No.
There's no trees on the lot?
Trees.
There are a couple of trees on the lot, I'm hoping to keep them there. We may have to trim some limbs back, but I'm hoping not to remove the trees.
So let's, if we were to go forward to have a condition to develop a site plan, a landscape plan showing shrubs and trees with the intent of keeping as many mature trees as possible, I think.
That's acceptable.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm still struggling with the whole definition of a variance for this lot, since it's not defined as a buildable lot today and you're asking for it to become one. But I like the project, so I don't know what to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to agree with Dennis, I'd like to see at least a site plan showing what the landscape plan is as well as the hardscape would be. And Patrick, I'm just kind of curious, because this is a corner lot, is there any, there's no other issues with regards to other dimensional requirements? Because normally we have a corner lot, you've got to take in both sides of the...
Yeah, so corner lots have two fronts and two sides, and this plan does meet that, those dimensional standards.
Okay. And the parking, is it stacked parking? Is that what, that's what is being planned, as far as the driveway is concerned?
Yes.
Okay. That's, yeah, my concern is kind of similar to Dennis, as far as I'd like to see how the layout's going to be as far as the walkways, any other hardscape, any stone patios and landscaping would be, but that's the only concern I have at this point right now, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To you, Mr. Maguire or Ms. Flood, do you get a chance to talk to the neighborhood at all about just the development or the single-family home that you're planning to build on Jewett Street?
I didn't have any contact from anyone after the notifications went out. Michael owns some property on Jewett Street, I don't know if he's had any contact.
I haven't spoken to any of the neighbors about it.
Okay. I mean, it is concerning to me when the neighbors, you know, have some reservations. I think it's always good when we can, you know, add on or beautify neighborhood, but in this case, you are also lacking some material, the site plan, landscape plan. I think, in my opinion, I'd like to see this maybe continue until we could have those documents developed, and maybe during that process, if you, Ms. Maguire or Ms. Flood, can meet with the neighborhood group to alleviate some of their concerns they have. But those are just my comments, you know, you do as you wish, it's your project. Those are the comments I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions for you. Sorry for that. What is the need for building the house? Is it for you to move in or...
It's not, no. I would be selling it.
You just want to be there and sell it?
Yes.
But she's saying she's trying to beautify the place, I thought she wants to move in. So how do you arrange about trash issue? How are you going to do it? I mean, do you have a, if you're going to erect a new building, you have to have trash for it and all the rest? What do you intend to do?
Trash removal during construction.
I mean, are you going to buy, you're just going to get containers, put it by the side or something like that?
Yeah, there'd be a roll-off dumpster there for any debris.
I'm just thinking, you're asking too much from us. Basically, you're asking us to give you a variance of 2,820 square feet. But for us to have a sound decision, probably we should see the plan, and how are you going to do it? I think that's my comment.
Thank you, Philip. So, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, is it permissible for me to question those who rose in opposition to this petition?
Certainly.
Could I speak with Ann Marie Page, please?
Page, if you would, Member Brier has a question that you're willing to answer.
I didn't hear what you said, sir. I'm old and I'm going deaf, I think.
Member Brier has a question he'd like to direct you away.
With respect to your position with the Centerville Neighborhood Organization, what do you believe is the most detrimental...
To our neighborhood?
Part of this project, yes.
We've got houses kissing close.
We always have.
I know.
I grew up and down.
But we can't have any more kissing close.
I'm just questioning...
Now we have automobiles, years ago we didn't.
No, in the interest of fairness. I grew up in Lower Centerville.
I know you did.
Put your hand out the window and shake hands with the guy next door.
Now we know how old you are.
We've always had parking problems, we've always had these issues. Why would the neighborhood organization be against a new structure in that neighborhood that will bring in more tax revenue, that's consistent with the neighborhood as it's presently constructed?
Because it's...
Why would you be opposed to that?
It's too close now, and my question would be back to you, why did zoning changes from 4,000 up to 7,000? In Valverde, it would be 10,000, but in Centerville, it's 7,000. So if you decided, using all your professional advice from builders and others, 7,000 is where we play the game, we can't keep knocking it back down to four. It is too bad, because the garage is beautiful, well-built, neat and clean, the property is neat and clean, it's a beautiful piece of property, it's just too tiny. I would hope that one of the abudders would want to buy it, and then they would have a nice big yard or more room to put their cars. We're too tight over in Centerville, it's too close, and we can't take much more.
Well, then, it seems to me that, I wasn't part of the process with the change of code, so, and I understand we have to follow, we have to follow, it's 7,000 square feet. Where in Lower Centerville would you be able to build a house if we were using 7,000 square feet?
Not very many.
No more new construction?
Not unless the house burns down and we have that happen.
The gentleman in the rear...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, sir, sir, please, if you...
Unless you start to take some of the school property and some of the parks, that's about the only thing that's got open land.
Prior to moving, prior to moving on in this conversation, it was requested by Member Brier to have a question-and-answer session with the Board of Centerville. To remain coram, we will move forward with your questions, sir, but we will do it from the podium, and we'll do it in a professional manner. Mr. Brier?
I believe you had a comment.
You asked a question about a piece of property in Lower Centerville that may make the 7,000-square-foot area. There's a piece of property on Hildreth Street right now, probably pretty close to the corner of Hildreth and Coburn, that I have seen a backhoe in there clearing this lot, and there's no question in my mind, somebody's about to build a house there. So there are pieces of property in and around Lower Centerville that are going to make the 7,000.
My comment wasn't that there aren't properties, but there are not many, they're minimal. We're never going to have a new structure in Lower Centerville ever again if we're going to be strictly adhered to this. It's got a nice piece of property...
It's not only Lower Centerville, there are other parts of Centerville that fall into that same category.
Tonight, we're talking about Lower Centerville, so let's just stick to that issue.
I thought we were sticking to the 7,000-square-foot issue.
Well, that's what I have a problem with, I understand that's the code, but I think that this proposal fits neatly within the character of that neighborhood, does not propose any additional parking problems that don't already exist, and I just don't understand why the neighborhood organization, well, I do understand, they don't want that close proximity, but let's face it, that's our neighborhood, that's the character of it. Do we really think we're going to change the overall character by denying these new properties to be built and bringing in additional tax revenue? How does that...
If you keep continually making the lot smaller than what's required by your code that was established by the zoning board in the city of Lowell, you know, there's going to be major problems with...
My point is there are so few...
It's so congested now.
My point is that there are so few lots that could be changed, it's not going to make any difference to the character of the neighborhood. I'm only asking, I'm, please, if I sound confrontational, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm only trying to find out what those who are most active in the neighborhood are trying to do for the neighborhood. What's your thinking? What's your motivation behind this? I don't get it. I don't agree with it.
Okay, you have the right to disagree.
No, and you're entitled to your right.
Correct, thank you.
But I think we should be promoting the interests of the neighborhood, and I think the new construction and new tax revenue is better for the neighborhood than limiting this, and limiting new structures and beautifying neighborhoods. I think that's what we should be doing in the Centerville neighborhood. I'm not telling you how you do your business, but as you know, I'm equally active in the Centerville neighborhood, representing the East End Social Club, but I've been through these fights for many years, and I often scratch my head when I don't see a single abuddah here from Lower Centerville opposing this project, yet the neighborhood organization, which gives the impression that they speak for the entire section of the city, when they, in fact, they don't. So I want everyone to know where you're coming from, when the guys that live next door aren't here to oppose it, so why would you oppose it? That's basically what I'm asking. Let's just agree to disagree. I don't agree that you have, you know, I don't agree that we should deny new construction.
We are going to move on. Mr. Brier has had his moment for conversation and question and answer, and I appreciate you, however, this will just become a back-and-forth, and we're not here for that, we're here for the Zoning Board of Appeals. You've heard the concerns. I would recommend we move a continuance to submit a new site plan, a landscape plan, and perhaps have an opportunity to speak to the neighborhood group. Several of the board members and Vice Chairman Peck has concerns about those plans. Our next meeting is February 25th. Would you be able to have those plans submitted by then, Counselor?
We should be able to, yes, I think so.
So it would be an updated site plan? Dennis?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, because I like to make requests, to follow the requirements of the submission process and include grading on that, and then establish a finished floor elevation, so we know exactly how much exposed foundation while we are looking at, if you could.
So you want a site plan, landscape plan with grading and finished floor elevation?
Right, and so the requirement for site plan submission includes a topo or graded plan that shows the contours of the lot.
As well as a landscape plan brought forth by the legislature.
And hardscape as well.
As well as a hardscape plan, what you're going to be doing in the walkway entrance, parking. Any other comments or concerns of the board?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate, Mr. Maguire and Ms. Flood, if, for the next meeting, just please reach out to all the neighbors, the neighborhood group, the people here tonight, I think it'd go a long way to helping your project if you have more buy-in, so if you can get those plans and meet with the neighborhoods, I think it'd be in your best interest. So I just wanted to add that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments of the board?
Yeah. I want the, I want the members of the neighborhood organization to realize that I have not rendered any final judgment on this, even though I have stated my disagreement with you publicly. I think it would serve the petitioner greatly if we had abuddahs who would come here in support or, you know, we need to hear from them, because I think if you had abuddahs that were against this petition, then that lends some credibility to what the neighborhood organization is saying. However, the abuddahs feel that this fits within the character of the neighborhood, then I tend to believe that maybe my comments are more accurate. That's my advice.
Thank you. So we are in agreement to have a continuance till February 25th with the submittal of the required plans as stated? Are you in agreement with that, Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Maguire, very well.
Yep.
Thank you.
That being said, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion on ZB 2019-2, oh, sorry, excuse me, 2019-3, 152 Jewett Street, to continue the public hearing to February 25th, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll start on the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Continue to February 25th.
Member Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Continue to February 25th.
Member McCarthy?
Continue to February 25th.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Jamina?
Approve continuance.
Thank you, we appreciate your time, and thank you to the public and the residents for coming out this evening. Also be aware, there will not be a public notice for the continuance, the public notice is this meeting. Moving on, under new business, ZB 2019-4 for variance, Cronos Inc. at 900 Chelmsford Street, Section 6.3, the applicant proposes to install a temporary 20-foot-by-56 wall sign to be installed on the facade of the building, the subject property is in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district, the applicant is seeking variance under Section 6.3.4, Number 18D of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief that is required. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Jonathan Profit, and I work at Cronos, 900 Chelmsford Street in Lowell, Mass. As you may know, we moved into Crosspoint Towers a couple of years ago, we relocated from Chelmsford, and we, in doing so, we invested over $50 million into the building. We were fortunate enough earlier this year to be named the top place to work in Massachusetts. We feel a big part of that has to do with our relocation to Lowell, and we're very proud of that, and we want to celebrate that not only with our employees, but with the city of Lowell. We think it's very important to help us continue to grow, grow our business, which, you know, helps us stay in Lowell and continue to grow in the building. In fact, we have about a $3 million renovation underway right now, where we're building out another floor in the building, and we anticipate doing yet another floor early next year for maybe another $3 or $4 million. So we continue to invest in the community, invest in the business. As part of sharing this news and erecting a sign, the unique characteristics of the building, being that it's very far off the road and quite a tall building, the tallest around, makes it, the only way we can really erect a sign is to put it at the rooftop, and in order to put it to the rooftop and see that, it has to be quite a large sign. So we don't feel like it's detrimental to the neighborhood, in fact, we think it's great to, again, celebrate what a great accomplishment it is to have the number-one workplace in all of Massachusetts. I will say that our original submittals on the sign said the top place to work in Boston, but the sign, and I have an example of that, I can share it with Mr. Burns, and you can show the board, it's exactly the same sign. Would you like me to share this? It's exactly the same sign, but it takes back a broader statement that it's the best place to work in Massachusetts, not just Boston.
Thank you, I do agree that it does involve and wrap more of the, more of the community because you are reaching the surrounding communities as well over in that property. So I think that's a nice addition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Sean?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, this is a no-brainer. I was going to give you a hard time about the fact that it's the number-one workplace in Boston, and we're not in Boston, so...
You do that one.
Just like to promote, but, no, it makes perfect sense, I'm glad that Cronos is, you know, just growing and expanding, and, you know, just, it's a great, been a great boon to the city, and I wish you the best of luck, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
I'm not going, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mark?
Lowell's very fortunate to have you, I agree that we should be celebrating, it was up to me, you could put a movie screen up there, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I too am quite impressed by what you've done with that building and the caliber of people you have working for you there. It's a true testament to you as a company that you've been able to get that designation, and I'd love to see that, you know, expressed on the building for everyone to see. How many square feet do you have in the building right now?
We're over 500,000 now, so, 503,000.
And you're growing.
We are growing, we have about 400 open jobs right now, and we, you know, we are, we continue to grow, we're a private company, but we publicize our earnings every quarter, and we just had, we just closed the best quarter ever, so it continues to be great, the city has been wonderful to us, we look forward to continuing the partnership.
Well, we are grateful, at least I am extremely grateful, that you've chosen Lowell as your headquarters, and the city should continue to be wonderful, because you're a great company and a great asset for us to all celebrate here, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Profit, I do appreciate your time coming out and presenting tonight. Since the inception of this project with Cronos coming to Lowell, working with the city administration and our delegate, your business staff, the property manager and owner of that building, it's been, it's been the model for partnerships in growing, growing an economy, enlarging our population of employees within that now shop in Lowell and Chelmsford and the surrounding towns, and they come here, they visit our venues within the city. You've enveloped an atmosphere over there that has enriched everyone that encompasses Cronos, and that's a credit to what you're doing. This board is certainly on your side, this is a great kudos, not only to Cronos, who is the leader in this, but to everyone involved, and to share that with you in the city, in our city's high-rise at Crosspoint, anyone who's lived in Lowell, lived in the surrounding city, the pains we've gone through with that, with that building, the celebrations we've gone through that building, we are now at the pinnacle because of what Cronos has brought to you with your team and all your employees and everyone over there. So I think this is wonderful, always look at the positive of things, and to celebrate this and have that sign up there for all to see coming up and down the major corridors is truly a congratulations to you and all your staff over there, and we thank you for choosing Lowell and sharing in this partnership and your growth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments of the board?
I know it was indicated to be a temporary sign, I'm just curious how long the applicant feels that they intend to have it up on the building.
Forever?
Good question.
Is there a time length? I mean, this is a unique situation for the board?
Sure, through Mr. Chairman, through Mr. Burns, the awards are given out annually, and I believe it's in January, so unless we're fortunate, should I say, hopefully, we will be fortunate enough next year to get it again, we can leave it up to Chairman Perrin's comments, but I think through January would be a reasonable timeframe if the board would allow, if they feel like they need, but...
Thank you. I have no concern of putting a timestamp on this, I agree with the, with that, is there any disregard for Mr. Profit's request? No. A year-long celebration is fine with this board, and I'm sure it'll be fine with the city and its residents.
I would guess that that means you've got to keep on going every single year, and number one every single year until such time, so, it's like the Patriots, there you go, let's keep building.
That being said, may I have a motion?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. So, Patrick, do we have to now add a condition that we have new plans, add the condition, because it changes the sign from Boston to Mass, or is that something that's, or do we have to...
Yeah, we should just maybe condition the revised rendering submitted today.
There's no, obviously no concerns about that.
No, sir.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-4 for variance under Section 6.3, 900 Chelmsford Street, for the installation of a temporary signage with the condition that it's accepting the plans that were submitted today.
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me, but if they're dated, I would just use that date as a reference.
Dated January 30th, 2019.
I'll sign this one to record, Mr. Clerk. May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with submittal.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve with submittal.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Profit, you've been approved, we appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Moving on, under new business, ZB 2019-5 for variance and pannery at 31 Robin Street, Section 5.1, the applicant proposes to construct a two-story addition onto the existing two-family home at 31 Robin Street. The home is a traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and the addition requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for maximum floor area ratio and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about your project.
I want to add rooms, two more rooms into the single house. It's a two-family, and then I would like to add two more rooms.
If you could just speak into the microphone, just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, yes, my name is Wendy Che, I will be client operator for him this evening.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
I would like to build...
Is that all you wish to speak about?
Yeah, I just would like to have two room added and a bathroom, a full bathroom added.
And you, are you in receipts, sir, of the comments from the city?
Would you please repeat?
The Department of Planning and Development had sent written comments on your petition. Did you receive those?
There are comments that I emailed you on last Wednesday?
I'm sorry, I have not seen an email. He just showed me right now, so I'm looking at it right now, so...
The city had emailed a set of comments that are real questions relative to your petition. If you haven't had an opportunity to read them, I think it's gonna be difficult to answer them, answer the questions. And then, the other question I have is, is the builder available to come to this meeting? For the petitioner?
No.
No, he wasn't available. Is he not available at all, or would he be available at another time? I would just caution you at this point, where you don't have a copy of the comments for us to discuss, and generally, if the builder who made the plans is here, it's easier for us to ask questions, so that would be a concern, because it invades to the petitioner. If he does not have a copy of the written comments in front of him, it's difficult for the board to ask questions and get the appropriate answers, because he doesn't have those questions, comments, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the builder is not available today to come, so...
Okay. I would make a recommendation that we continue this to February 25th, our next meeting. That will give the petitioner the opportunity to have a copy of the comments, prepare a response, and if the builder is available, I think it'd be appropriate if he came to help the petitioner answer the questions.
Okay.
Are you acceptable to that? That'll just be our next meeting. It's not this Monday, it'll be the following Monday, the last Monday of the month.
Okay, thank you.
And that will give you the opportunity. Patrick, do you have a copy of the comments?
Yes, I can give those to him.
Okay. So, Mr. Burns will give you a copy of the comments. That'll give you an opportunity to bring them to your builder, and we can continue this to February 25th.
Okay.
I may have a motion?
I just want to emphasize, you probably should have the builder here. I'm just looking at the plans, and there's some notes about demolition, and I don't see anything about anything being... I don't see anything about the plans that says that something's gonna be, that any demolition's gonna be involved, and I'm quite curious as to why they would put notes of that in the plans, which would be questions that we'd have to ask the builder. So, I would really emphasize you try to have whoever you plan on to construct this to be here on February 25th.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion on ZB 2019-5, 31 Robin Street, variance under Section 5.1, to continue the public hearing to February 25th, 2019.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Continue to February 25th.
Member Peck?
Approve with continuance.
Member Callahan?
Continue to February 25th.
Member McCarthy?
Continue to February 25th.
Member Domeno?
Continue, continue.
Member Brier?
It will be continued to February 25th. Moving that light, this is the public notice of the continuance. There is no requirement for additional notice. Thank you. Appreciate your time, sir. Moving on, under other business. 5-7 East Merrimack Street, we have a minor modification. The proponent has requested a minor modification to the previously approved mixed-use building. The proposed changes include reducing the height of the building from 12 to five stories, the number of dwelling units from 66 to 42, and the size of the restaurant from 4,270 square feet to 915 square feet.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board.
How are we here tonight?
I'm Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell, here on behalf of One Riverfront LLC, here this evening to request a minor modification to the original, for the previously issued permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening, and also to request an extension to that very permit that was previously issued this evening. To give you an update as to where we are right now, we just went through the planning board meeting last week. They issued a determination that this did qualify as a minor modification from their standpoint in regard to the special permit that was issued from the planning board, and now we're here before the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a similar request. So, the project languished on for a little bit in the way that the original proposal was a much taller building. It was just a building that, in the end, Mr. Daley from One Riverfront decided to go with a five-story building. It'll be a podium construction building. It will be mixed-use, and this is the building here. I gave packets out to all the board members. It's gonna have a ground floor here, which will have a mixed-use with some residential and a coffee shop, and an exercise room. There's a floor plan in the drawing set that I gave you, and then there's gonna be four stories of living space. The units, the number of units has been reduced from 66 down to 42, and as I said, the stories is reduced from 12 to five stories. The roof is gonna have a green design element to it, where there's gonna be an open plaza on the roof. That's also on the sheets that I provided everyone, where there'll be a patio space and some quality open space on the roof of this structure. This is a view from East Merrimack. This is the plaza area here to be commonly used by the residents as well as the folks in the coffee shop, and obviously in the nicer days of the year. And the coffee shop is gonna be positioned on this end unit towards East Merrimack. As far as, you know, the full engineering for the project, we'll go through DPD and all the municipalities of jurisdiction, the water department, sewer department, engineering department, Department of Public Works. And this is the proposed design. There's different elevation views of the design that are in your packet. We've also, since the last meeting, we've removed that existing structure and stabilized that whole area, and it's been fenced off, and the area has been stabilized, so that we've removed the entire existing structure and got rid of that since the prior approval. And I can leave it to the board with any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. At this point, I'd like to move to public meeting, hoping for anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is still an amazing project, and the modifications you're asking from Mr. Hammer, I have no issues with. I think we're lucky to have this development city, so I'm all for it, so best of luck, Mr. Hammer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Phillip?
Yeah, the only question is, I mean, it's a good project, but why did you reduce the dwelling price?
Economics. The 12-story building is a much different structure to construct, a lot more expensive. You just get into a full steel-rated construction. I know Mr. McCarthy knows a lot about that. I won't be able to tell you the details of that, but this is gonna be considered podium-style construction, where the first story, it's my understanding, is a steel frame in order to hold four wood story, wood construction stories above. Even though it won't look like wood, when you see this elevation, there will be wood underlaid within the building itself. So, it's more...
So, it's...
It's more, it's an easier building to build, less timeframe, more within the means of the client, and he's scheduled to start this this summer.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to know, it's not a structural issue? Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Phillip. Mark?
It's a great project, and I'm just glad to see you can still enjoy it, and just work on it. You have everything before, it's great now. Still doing it all.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with Mark that I think that this'll be a great project. I kind of like the idea of it not being 12 stories, frankly. I know that I shouldn't say that, but it just feels like it's an easier piece to see fit into the city. Can you just tell me what the parking scenario is for these units now?
Sure. Yeah, so we have a full parking agreement with the city of Lowell to accommodate the total spaces that would be required for this. We have a parking garage at the Lower Locks, parking garage off of Warren Street, as well as the John Street Garage as well, and there's... So, we have a parking agreement to utilize either one of those two garages.
As development has taken place since this was approved, we are seeing garages, I think, being a little more filled up with parking requirements that we've kind of granted over that timeframe. How many years back was it? Was it one or two years?
That was in 2017.
Okay.
The original permit?
Yes.
Yeah, we had the... So, the original permit, if you go to the decision, was filed on March 8th of 2017. I actually noticed a typo on the actual permit itself, says 2007 on it, but it was 2017.
I would just like to see a condition that DPD or somebody from the city weigh in on the availability of those. What would be one space per unit that would be required? Is it, or is it two?
This is DMU or UMU?
It's two per unit.
Okay, then it's two per unit.
Right. Just to make sure that we're still on track with our available parking in these garages two years later. But I'm quite happy that something is being planned still on that site, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick, I think when this first came before us, I think the parking wasn't much of an issue because the Davidson parking lot is a city-owned lot, and they were covered under that scenario, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, okay. Yeah, I was in sort of support of the project the last time. I think I made, like, I told Mr. Daley, it was a very wonderful, great project, very ambitious, as I think I might have said, but it still fit the character and the neighborhood, and was happy to see it come before us. It's scaled down, and quite frankly, it's still... I like it a little better when it's scaled down. 12 feet, 12 stories, like I said, very ambitious, but if you can scale down, if you can scale down, it still fits the... I think it still fits it a little better, so I'm in support of this, and I wish them the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So, as it relates to the extension, Patrick, that'll be part of the vote?
Yeah, so you want to have a separate motion for an extension of the special permit in addition to the modification request and the changes?
So, it'll be two votes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a...
Phillip, you have a question?
So, Patrick, although he says it's a minor change, I think it's a big change from 66 to 42. Does he have to do any other application, even though it fits? It doesn't matter?
So, that's for the board to decide. That's why it's here tonight, so the board's deciding whether the change is a substantial change from the original approval. I mean, it is decreasing in nature the number of units, so just for the sake of consistency, like, for instance, the planning board made a motion that it was not a substantial change. They approved the changes that were made, and then they issued an extension of the site plan review.
So, which, two, should be two votes or three? Like, one to state that it's not a substantial change, one for the modification, and then one for the extension? So, three votes? Okay.
So, being that it's a reduction...
Yeah.
...in a build, and deemed a minor modification, is there any board member that is conditioning a new application? We file a report with the minor modification for vote.
The only thing, I didn't see anything from the city stating that the, two years out, that the capacity in the garages is still there for the 80 spaces that we're looking at? Is it 84 spaces?
Yeah, I know that Mr. Daley had spoken at the planning board meeting that he was currently finalizing the agreement with the city. I know that it's been verbally approved by the city, but the official final documents have not, but that was stated at the planning board meeting by Mr. Daley himself.
Is that good enough? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you know, condition that finalizing those parking agreements, you could do that. But, yeah, it was, there was a parking agreement in place that was allowing a lot more parking on the city's parks, so now it's, the project requires less because it's so scaled down.
Yeah, okay.
So, condition parking? We just condition a parking plan with the... Work with TPD on the parking plan?
If you choose to.
We can just condition that you just got an update of the parking plan as approved and agreed through the petitioner in the city. So, we'll have, is there any board members that wants to require a new application? I'm in favor of accepting this as a minor modification as it came through the planning board overall. Okay.
Agreed.
We'll accept this as a minor modification with no new application, with the conditions to be read by the clerk, and we will take three motions. May I have one?
For the condition, just want to make sure we're clear, the condition for all three is going to be work with TPD to parking plan based on the modifications, correct? That would be the way to...
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, I, yes, yes.
So, all right. Mr. Chairman, obviously agreeing with that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay. So, with three, Mr. Chairman, first motion, is there, is there a, you know, ZB number I'm supposed to be citing on this or just? Because this is, this is on the prior.
I do have it.
Yeah.
It's ZB dash 2017 dash 06.
06. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. First vote on ZB 2017 dash 06 for 157 East Merrimack Street. The first motion is to accept, well, accept that this is not a substantial.
Minor modification.
It's, it's a minor modification.
Yes. Basically, here, changes are not substantial in that it is a minor modification.
Changes are not substantial and this is a minor modification of the prior order of the zoning board with the, with the previous mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve modification.
Member Peck?
Approve modification.
Callahan?
Approve modification.
Member McCarthy?
Approve modification.
Member Brier?
Approve modification.
And member Jamina?
Approve modification.
We have another second motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion again on ZB 2017 dash 06 for 157 Merrimack Street for, the next one is, I'm sorry, Patrick, I should have wrote this down, but.
So this motion would be like the changes, so.
The modifications themselves.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. To approve the modifications as set forth, provided by the plans of the, from the petitioner.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve with prior condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Okay.
Approved.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2017 dash six for 157 East Merrimack Street for extension of the prior granting of, of special permit.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
I got approval with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with condition.
Member Brier?
Approve the conditions.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
So we have an approve.
Thank you so much.
We thank you for your detailed plan and we wish you the best of luck.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Moving forward, under other business, we have minutes for approval for December 10th, 2018. All members had an opportunity to review those minutes. Any modifications?
I wasn't here on that, that meeting and I didn't review it on the, online, so I would have to abstain, I think, right? Would that be, if Patrick?
Yeah, if you weren't present, correct.
Okay. Or I'll answer. I'm present today, but, yeah.
We have a motion to accept the minutes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve the minutes.
Member Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Present.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the minutes.
Member Brier? Member Jamina?
Approved.
Minutes have been approved for the record. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second motion.
Motion. Needing adjourn.
Thank you.